All work session and regular council meeting to order. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence and let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. And while we take a moment of silence, let's remember Virginia Burton, one of our fire police, who was the most dedicated person that I ever seen. She was really the face of every event, no matter fire, accidents, snow, sleet, rain, heat. You've always seen Virginia out at the scene. And I don't think this borough will ever be able to replace somebody with the dedication that she had. So let's remember her in our moment of silence and her viewing is Friday night and Saturday morning. And I know she worked a lot of viewings that were in this town and was out there, so maybe we could show some respect for her. And let's attend her viewing on Friday evening.
Do you know what place it is at that, Rob?
It's Wade's Funeral. Please salute the flag.
I flag the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dillon, you want to do roll call, please?
Here, President.
Mr. Riccio, Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezz.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Ketroch.
Here.
Okay, I know we have some presentations and some things to do this evening, so I try to move this as quick as possible. The first thing is I'll have the mayor present the historical foundation with a check. I don't know who's here from this. Could you come forward, Nick? And a proclamation.
I'm going to hand you this. As everybody knows, the third Saturday in October of the year is Historic Bristol Day, and we want to have a proclamation for Historic Bristol Day. Proclamation Historic Bristol Day, County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, honoring the Bristol Cultural and Historical Foundation for the sponsorship of the annual Historic Bristol Day celebration. Whereas Bristol Culture and Historic Foundation will sponsor the annual Historic Bristol Day celebration on October 19th, and whereas this event has brought great pride to the borough of Bristol and provides its citizens today with grace the honor and historical significance of Bristol Borough. And whereas the council of the borough of Bristol desire to honor Bristol Culture and Historical Foundation and the many hardworking volunteers for their efforts in this annual event, now therefore be resolved by the council of the borough of Bristol, hereby resolved by the authority of the state, that October 19, 2019, is hereby designated as Historic Bristol Day, and Bristol Culture and Historical Foundation is hereby honored for its sponsorship of the annual Bristol Day event. Council congratulates participants, volunteers, and sponsors of this event, which has proven to be the highlight of many community events in Bristol Borough. Fully proclaimed as seventh day of October 2019, Borough of Bristol, Raffi, Giselle, President of Council. Congratulations. Sure, it's been outstanding, and that hasn't happened every year, and there's a check for borough for their support, you know, things like that.
Just a couple of things. Something new this year, we always have a car show, Martha Jesswaldy's been doing the car show for eight years at the Snyder Girardi School, but the highlight of this year is we're going to have an antique boat display and show down by the waterfront. So there's an organization who's been wanting to come to Bristol Borough for a long time to do this, and we secured them thanks to Mr. Dillon and Merrill's been helping to try to get this all worked out. So we hope there will be about 18 antique or vintage boats displayed under the wharf and possibly in the water if the weather cooperates that day. Again, there's so many different activities going on that day, I suggest if you want to take a look, bristlehistory.org is where our program is available to download, that way you can plan your day ahead of time. We have a variety of activities going on. St. Mark's Church is doing something different this year at 11:30, their schoolchildren are doing a presentation of the history of the church. We have a children's corner again at the library this year under the direction of Mary Jesswaldy. And also the library, if you haven't seen it yet, it opened on Friday evening, is the Answering the Call exhibit. It's a dedication to all the first responders in Bristol Borough, and I had an opportunity to see it Friday evening, and it was very, very impressive, so I strongly recommend you see that this month, and it will be highlighted on Bristol Day as well. And of course, we have our house tours. We have five homes open this year. Three have never been opened on prior Bristol Days, and those tickets are available at, if you want advanced tickets, at Gray IDs, By &amp; Menouni Jewelry, the Tax Office, and the library. And our programs are available at those four places as well. So again, there's a lot, a lot of different things planned, so I would suggest just going onto the website and taking a look, that way you can plan your day accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the way Matt has everything scheduled, I'd like to introduce a new police officer before we get. Is he here, Chief?
Eric. This is Jared Weiner. He's our new part-time police officer. Jared's an experienced officer, he's done time in other municipalities, but also Yardley and, what was the other one, Jacob?
West Concha.
West Concha, Hawken. Very happy with his background. How old's your daughter?
Six.
Six-year-old daughter. Good gift to gab, I think he'll be a good addition to our, he can handle himself, I know that, and I think he'll be a good addition to our team, so I just wanted to introduce him to the council and thank you for bringing him on board.
Thank you. We were in executive session prior to coming out, so we were a few minutes late discussing some union issues and personnel, so that's what the executive session was for. Right now, we have Gene Williams here from the Grundy Foundation. Are you here?
No.
Are you sent representatives here to have a presentation, so you want to go to the podium? Screen down.
Thank you, council members, for taking the time to allow us to share with you. We are from 21st Century, I'm Stacy Tanham.
I'm Evan Banshee.
We are project coordinators for the after-school and summer programs that are here in the borough between the district and St. Mark's School. So we have a PowerPoint presentation that will just give you a little overview of everything that we had going on this summer, and a lot of it a big thanks to the council, the school So at Snyder Girardi Elementary School, we had our annual summer stream camp. This year, we ran from July 1st through August 8th, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 2:30. We tacked on an extra hour this year, and we invited students from first through eighth grade, rising first through eighth grade to participate, and rising fifth through eighth grade from St. Mark's School to participate as well. This is our daily schedule, just to break it down a little bit for you, the students did receive breakfast every day at 8:30, and then from 9 to about 11 o'clock, our first through fourth grade were in their academic sessions, while the fifth through eighth grade were in their recreation. And then we had a quick change over there, the first through fourth grade went into recreation in the afternoon after their lunch period, and the fifth through eighth grade went into their academic periods. And then that last hour that we tacked on there was for social emotional learning and drug and alcohol prevention programs, which both cohorts, eight and nine, received extra funding this year through 21st Century for those specific programs. And our breakfast and lunch were all provided by the Archdiocese of Philadelphia Nutritional Development Services. So with our SEL programs, we had different vendors come in, John Jaeger from the Falls Township Police Department, Network of Victim Assistance, also known as NOVA, the Peace Center, NYWCA, and they all came in to talk with specific grade levels about bullying prevention, building friendship, and how to, you know, find the right people to talk to about your emotions. We also had other program partners come in this year, Franklin Institute is always a fan favorite, Snipes Farm came in and did programs with our first through fourth grade. Grundy librarians visited us twice, and we did our annual walking trip to the library. Cops and Kids is a volunteer organization that brings in books to donate to each of our students. The Bristol Borough Police Department did their annual visit as well, they're always a favorite too, because they bring water, ice, and ice cream for the kids. So our field trips up there, Silver Lake Nature Center, we had two trips this year, and we did them by grade level, so first and second grade went to Silver Lake on one day, and then third and fourth grade got to go on another day. It was all curriculum-based, it was onsite at Silver Lake Nature Center, so the whole trip was facilitated by their personnel with our staff as chaperones, and they learned about different animals and plants. Our fifth through eighth grade got to go to Snipes Farm again, they really enjoyed it last year, so we wanted to make sure that they got the same opportunity, and they worked on team building and farm life and how to cook the food that you sell. Court Creek Park, that's our last day of the camp every year, we do our big family day, so we did Court Creek again. We had a big, a big cookout for lunch, and the kids got to do different activities all across the park where we rented space specifically for our families. And we had about 80 parents in attendance that day, on top of our own students, as well as their, some of their siblings and other families too. We had a walking trip to the Bristol Marsh for our fifth through eighth grade students, and that was with the Heritage Nature Conservancy. They came to us and they walked the students down to the Bristol Marsh, and they had different activities set up down there where the kids got to draw by the river and learn about waterways and pollution, and they also got a brief history on the Burlington Island, where they used to have the little amusement park, thank you. So they got to talk about what it would have been like back then with an amusement park and how it would affect the environment if they were to put another amusement park in there, so the kids really got to expand their thinking there. And then, of course, we had our annual walking trip to Grundy Library for first through fourth grade. Our academic sessions, we do math and ELA every day, they get 45 minutes of each. With math, we did pre and post assessments, and in all of our grade levels, we did see a percentage increase of the average grade on the pre and post exam. Some of them, just to give you an example, were very dramatic, our fourth grade, their pre-exam percentage average was 57%, and by the end of the summer, they had an 84% average.
Math or English?
It's math.
Math.
Yeah. And we did see an increase in all of the math, in all the math sessions. For ELA, what we did was, the students were grouped by their grade level and then selected for small group tutoring based on their DRA reading level, but they got to work on their summer reading projects this year in the camp. So most of them got to have them all finished, so they got to enjoy the rest of the summer without having to worry about turning in work in the beginning of the school year. Our athletic sessions, they got to choose either football, soccer, or basketball and diamond sports, and this is all curriculum-based instruction with two coaches per sport. These coaches were interviewed and handpicked based on their experience in actually coaching the sport, so that the students were getting something productive out of each session. And at the end of the camp, we did a culminating event for the older kids, it was a three-v-three staff-student basketball tournament, and then the younger kids in first through fourth grade got to do a staff-student kickball game. And we invited the parents to attend that as well, and we had about 30 in attendance, which was pretty good since it was our first year having a culminating event for the athletics. And our performing arts sessions, this was our second year having a full-blown performing arts section of the camp. We had about 90 students participate in performing arts. They did dance, singing, acting, and visual arts, and their theme was Aladdin this year. They had over 90 parents in attendance. And Evan's going to take over the middle high school.
Yeah, not only did we have a great summer at Snyder Girardi, but we had a huge success at the Bristol Middle Senior High School. We had eight individual programs run, one being middle school remediation, we had credit recovery for the high school students, we had an athletic combine for all the sports teams in Bristol Borough. We had garden club, workforce readiness, a college tour strip this year, which all the students that attended got to go to four different universities, well, actually eight different universities on four, four trips. We had a history club who got to go on five trips to multiple sites, so in total, they had 12 different sites that they got to see within five days. And then we had Lead to Succeed at Bucks County Community College, which is an entrepreneurial program that they go over and learn all about professional skill sets later on in life, leadership, and things like that. Next slide. In total, for the elementary school, we had 211 students registered with an average attendance of 150, and then we had about 150 for high school students. So in total, roughly, we served about 360 students in Bristol Borough. I can't read the rest of that.
We took a total of 19 field trips over the course of the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school students, which is the most that we've ever done in a summer, all thanks to the contribution from the council and the AOC. And we do have a summer camp video, similar to last year's, but it touches on things that are different this year. It's in the works, we have a rough copy, but we got to wait for approval, so we will be showing that at the school board meeting next week, and hopefully be able to share that with all of you as well. And one last thing that we forgot to put in our little PowerPoint, we actually received 500 backpack meals from St. Mary's Backpack Meal Program that we were able to send home with the kids this summer. So that was for our Snyder Stream students, ESY students, and the Art Rage students as well, they all got to take home meals on top of what we had from the Archdiocese of Philadelphia.
We also allowed students from the high school to come down and volunteer in the Snyder Girardi camp. Many of them were football players, so after morning workouts, they would come down and actually work in our athletics, but also academics, and we had a few volunteers, one being from St. Mars, who regularly attended last year in our after-school program, came in and volunteered because she was outgrew our program, but still wanted to participate in some sort of way, so she gave back to the students, was able to volunteer a time for performing arts. That's pretty much the overview of our summer. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? Tony?
I just have one question. Now, do you see, like, do the teachers during the regular school year comment to you guys about the success that the summer program has and kind of kick-start them into the year?
We actually got the most compliments this year because of the summer reading projects. Not only did the students get to work on that, but they also got to get a head start on the Reading Olympics books as well. Mrs. Rosado made them available to all the students, so the fourth through sixth grade students that were interested in Reading Olympics could get a head start on the reading that they would be doing during the school year. So we do get feedback, and we do take it into consideration each year as we go forward, so definitely the reading projects were a big thing, and we always ask the teachers for input on the curriculum in math and ELA, so that if our summer teachers aren't regularly from the district or St. Marks, they know exactly what they're supposed to be teaching the students, so that there's no gap.
Gotcha. What year is this for this camp? How many years have you guys been doing it?
Under Ivans, since Ivans has been a partner of 21st Century, I believe this is the fourth year, but I think it's the fifth or sixth for the elementary school that has had a camp.
It's obviously a great program. I know, in the, I'm a teacher, and in the world that we live in, everything is data-driven, 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 too much, as far as I'm concerned, but are you seeing and/or tracking since you guys started this program if there's any tick or uptick in scores or things along those lines?
We do collect data on the students that participate in our, in our programs. If they reach a total of 30 days or more over the summer and school year combined, then we are able to report on their first term and fourth term ELA and math grades, as well as their PSSA scores from the previous year to the current year, and we are able to see it that way. Those are things that we are mandated to report to the state. So there are some things that we see improvement on, typically it's a behavior thing that we see from the students. It's not always the most academic improvement.
Sure, that's okay.
Because we only get them for a small amount of time in the summer and after school, but we do have some data that we report on.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, I think this is an excellent opportunity that the council has taken in participating along with the 21st Century group and the school district. By this program is, you can see there's a lot of thought and analysis that goes into putting this program together. I think it's one of the best programs in Bucks County, and it just keeps on growing every year, so I think our, our taxpayer dollars are well-spent, and I know I attended one or two events, and it was just fantastic to see how the kids really participated in everything, not only the sports side of it, but also in the educational part, so I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
The interaction between staff and students during our camp days is outstanding. They don't ever want to leave, and when they're coming, there are smiles on their face, ready to go for the day. You think putting a bunch of kids in summer into classroom setting that they want to enjoy so much, but they are eager to come every day to camp, we had a great turnout.
Well, thank you.
Definitely a fantastic summer.
We have a presentation from Robin Robinson and Gail Humphrey from the Bucks County Recorder of Deeds. They were here last month and to a presentation, but things didn't work out, so welcome.
To my benefit.
To your benefit.
Since I couldn't be here because I was taking my daughter back to college, so I'm excited.
We're glad to have you.
I'm excited to be here, and I have to tell all of you, this is, this building is beautiful. I mean, this is just really a treat to get to be here.
Thank you.
I mean, Gail and I have been going all over the county, and I, oh gosh, this is on TV, isn't it? Well, this is, this really is the most.
It's on them right now.
Oh, good. This is, well, I want to say.
At least you're speaking the truth.
Well, this is the most beautiful township building, or this borough building, isn't it, Gail? Gail will back me up on it, and we've been almost everywhere, and this is sensational. So thank you for having me here tonight, I am your recorder of deeds. I've only been your recorder of deeds one year and eight months, but in that time, a lot has happened, and in the recorder of deeds office, as in life, we don't know what we don't know. And I tried really hard to be your recorder of deeds, I started running in 2005, and I finally won in 2017. And again, like I said, I didn't know what I didn't know, and I went to a recorder of deeds meeting the first April that I was in office, which is a year and a half ago, and I met a bunch of recorder of deeds from all over the Commonwealth, and I met this wonderful woman, Mary Ann, from Blair County, and she told me about record improvement money, and she told me about her old deed books. So I came home and I said to my staff, what is record improvement money, and do we have any old books? And so on the old books, they took me, and I'm going to try to change this to the warehouse, uh-oh, here we go, next maybe, oh, left click, oh, there we go. Can you see it? That's what they showed me, there are the old deed books of our county. And these books date back to 1684. They're thrown on the floor of a warehouse, the warehouse is at 611 and Alms House, it's our county warehouse. No air conditioning, no heat, and there they are, William Penn, everything, Bristol Borough, Wade's Funeral Home, it's all in there. So, record improvement money, what is that? Well, every time we record a deed, a mortgage, anything in our office, by state law, we collect $5. Two goes to the county's record improvement fund, and $3 goes to the recorder of deeds to help with this kind of thing, to improve the record. So, anyway, I started spending money on this. CoFile. CoFile, Mary Ann told me, was who she used to fix the records. It's a company that bought a little mom and pop restoration company in Vermont, and Gail and I went up there and we watched them restore, we watched them restore some of our books, page by page. They're like artists, they wear white coats, they have little tools, like dental tools, where they scrape the tape off and mend the pages. So, let's see. So here are the books, whoops, go back there a minute. What? I did, but it went over the other page I wanted. Okay, we'll skip that other page. Well, here we are at this page, I don't know how to get rid of this. You can tell I'm not that savvy with this stuff, but I'm really good with books. So, anyway, you can see how, the books that were on the floor, you can see how the pages are already looking better. So they took the books, we started with 45 books, oh good, here is the IT guide to the rescue, oh my God, you knew it was going to be me, didn't you? So I wanted to go back to the other one, we go back to the other one a minute, the slide before this one? Oh, previous. Oh, so there, you can see how the books are, yeah, the pages are all crumbly, you guys all see that?
Left side of the wheel whenever you're ready.
Okay, left side. So here they are in Vermont, and now they're getting better. So, they had to take the books apart, the books were all, all the pages were cut, they call it guillotined, because they scanned all the pages, so if you come into our office, you can see everything on microfilm. So when they scanned the books, they put the pages back in the cover and they wrapped it with string. String is an enemy of paper, as is tape, who knew? I didn't know any of this. So they stringed them together, so here you can see where CoFile has started to put the pages in order and getting them ready for treatment. Paper, I can't read that, so, you know, even though I've done this presentation a million times, I don't know what it says, but in the beginning, paper was made from cotton, and my mother would tell me how the rag men would come around and, and get rags, and they'd sell them, and that's what paper was made of. Some of our books are in different colors, we have some books that are, the pages are blue-gray, and Joe, my CoFile guy, likes to tell me that those books were made of uniforms from the Civil War. I don't know if that's true, but I believe it, because it's, it's exciting, but they're made from rags, and then paper, you can see, and I can't read the dates, was made out of wood pulp, so when you would squish a page, the paper would just crumble. Now, paper is made of a combination, and it's really nice, so when I get mad and I wad up a piece of paper and throw it at my daughter, it sticks together. Bindings, you can see here the bindings, I'm just going to go through this quickly, these are just our old books, linen bindings, these are all the bindings that CoFile scraped off our pages, and again, these are all our pages, these are not someone else's. This is mending of the tape, on the right, it's the little tool scraping the tape off the pages. Tape is an enemy of paper, it pulls the ink off the page. This is iron-gold ink, and it's very, very sturdy, so it didn't, you know, we still have all the writing, thank goodness. These books were in just horrendous condition. So Gail and I watched, oh, that was a bath that you just saw. The wa, the pages get put into a water bath, and that was our page from Bucks County, and when Gail and I saw that, I don't know what you thought, Gail, but I was like, oh my God, what are they doing, putting our pages in water? But they bathe all the pages, and then they hang them to dry. The pages on the right are too fragile to hang on the fishing wire, so they're laid flat, but you can see all those teeny little bits of paper up at the top left of that one pa, of that one. But you can see all those teeny little bits of paper up at the top left of that one slide, they put all that back together. Everything has been put back together. Cockling, it's like when you take laundry out of the dryer and it's wrinkled. They use this big piece of metal to flatten our pages, so they're all nice and beautiful, before they put them in, more mending. So this is like, so Recorder of Deeds, one of my main jobs is to protect and maintain the record of this county. So back in the day, a Recorder of Deeds was trying to protect the pages, and they put this linen seal on top of the paper. So CoFile pulled it off, and this is pulling that off, more mending of the pages. And that's paste, like when I was a little girl and I'd play with the paste, that's paste coming off on like a spatula. They're just scraping that paste off our pages. Then they get a solvent bath. You can see where the pages are ripped. All of that gets mended, which is exciting. More removal of tape. Like I told you, tape is the huge enemy. There's a bunch of tape, and if you saw that approach, you'd see the ink markings on the tape. Then they do a deacidification process. Now, this is Vermont. They promised me that everything's environmentally friendly. A little gallon of this chemical costs four hundred dollars, but this is going to preserve these books. Mending, this is Japanese linen they use to mend the rips in the pages, and that's like a little heating iron that heats the Japanese linen onto the pages. And then when the pages are done, they're put in a Myler sleeve, which is an archival polyester sleeve that's UV-protected and is going to last a long, long time. I'm going to tell you in a minute. This is an original cover, handmade. We saved some of these, because, you know, I'm a history buff, and I don't want to lose all of these things. And then there's the final product. So we have seven hundred old deed books, which turns into fourteen hundred volumes, because they become very thick with the Myler pages. So I know that you're all asking, what are you going to do with those books, Robin? You're not going to throw them back in that warehouse. No, so we really lucked out. The county is redoing the old administration building where our office is, and they've given us a beautiful new storage unit in the old sheriff's department on the ground level. It's climate-controlled, it's locked up, and our new books are in there already. And it's easy, so when you come in and you want to see Book Thirty-Three, we can run downstairs and get it, instead of having to go to the warehouse and dig through the books. Legally, if you came in and wanted to see a book, we would have to go and get that book for you to see. And it was very, it was just awful. Life expectancy. Okay, CoFile has promised me these books are going to last five hundred years, and I'm going to hold them to it. Storage, we discussed the storage of the books. How am I going to pay for these? This is an expensive project. If they hadn't gone to the warehouse, and if they had been taken care of like they should have been, this wouldn't be as expensive as it is. So I'm paying for this with record improvement money that I told you about. And I said to Joe, I said, you know, what am I going to do? I need to raise some money. He said, well, in New England, they do an adopt-a-book program. I said, I could do that. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, to talk to you about Adopt a Book. So, like I said, Gail and I have been going all over the county, and we've been getting donations from our municipalities, our boroughs, our townships. And when they give us a wonderful donation, we put their name in the book. It's going to last five hundred years. I mean, this is, last Christmas, we had people buying books, you know, they don't really get the book, but buying books as gifts and to get their name in it. I had a woman send me two thousand dollars this last week in memory of her husband, who loved history. So she'll be coming in to get a picture of herself with me with the book, and we'll put it in our newsletter. So that's Adopt a Book. We have been the most successful adopt-a-book program that CoFile knows about. We've raised over twenty-seven thousand dollars in Adopt a Book. I'm very proud of that. Book One and Book Two, I'll just tell you this real quick, because this is interesting. Like I told you, the Recorder of Deeds is supposed to maintain the record. Well, Gail and I have been traveling all over the county, not just to borough councils, but we have had the books on display, and we've taken them to the Visitor Center in Ben Salem. We've been here at the Grundy Library. We had three books on display, and I came and did a presentation. So we were going to the David Library, and we took Book One to the David Library, which is in Washington Crossing. They're very well-known. And we showed it to the librarian, and she looked through all of Book One. I mean, I'm so proud, there's William Penn's name, you know, I'm like a proud mother. And at the end, she says to me, Robin, this is not an original deed book. Oh, my God, I thought Gail was really going to lose it. I tried to stay calm, but Gail wasn't. So we got in the car, I called Joe up, and I do not yell, but I think my voice was a little high that day, wasn't it, Gail? And I said, Joe, what are you doing fixing books that aren't original deed books? I, you know, what are we doing here? Well, comes to turn out that this deed book One and Two had been copied by hand, and in the back of deed book One, and I can't read it from here, but basically, it's from the Recorder of Deeds of eighteen ninety to nineteen oh-two, that this is an original copy, word for word, of original deed book One. The deed book One is worn and dilapidated, and I guess they had to throw it out. So, you know, this is, to me, because they didn't have a copy machine, this is the way they protected and maintained the record of this county. Someone had to copy it, and it's beautiful, word for word. So a few months later, we had Bucks County Community College came in one night to learn how to search deeds. And the professor said to me, Robin, the Recorder of Deeds many years ago, Ed Goodconnect, used to walk around here with a little white book, and he said it was the original deed book One. I went in my office, I pulled out this little white book that Gail and I had been throwing around. We thought that it was just, you know, fake, because it was all laminated. It looked very fake, didn't it, Gail? I mean, this wasn't real. I take it out to her, I said, this little thing? And she says, that's it. I called CoFile, they came down, they picked up that book, they took it to Vermont, they tested it, and sure enough, it's the real Book One. So we found the original deed book One. CoFile was able to take the lamination off the pages, and that's going to last five hundred years. And we just got it back last week, and we're really excited about it. Because back in the day, the county employees would just throw history in the trash. And I know this is true, because the Mercer Museum told Gail and I they used to trash pick the county. I'm like, are you kidding me? So, anyway, we have deed book One. Phineas Primpherton was one of, was William Penn's first right-hand person. He was the first Recorder of Deeds clerk of courts. He was everything. His name is throughout our first couple deed books. One more thing, a couple more things. So I go to another Recorder of Deeds meeting a year ago, and this wonderful woman, Debbie from Washington County, told me, oh, I'm redoing my books, and I have slaves listed in my books. I'm like, what? I come home, I say to my staff, do we have slaves listed in our deed books? Sure enough, we do. And they're in our miscellaneous books, and we brought one here tonight. Gail has it right here. It is sensational. We had slaves throughout this whole county. I have a list of everybody in my office. But what Quakers would purchase slaves, then set them free, and record them in our books, just like property. Cows and bunnies and slaves are recorded in these books. These are a treasure. We have one of them on display right now at the Pearl Buck House. They have an African-American museum display from Africa to Bucks County. So it's really, really wonderful. Lucille Trench, we put her in. She was the first woman Recorder of Deeds of Bucks County. I am the second. And genealogy, we do a lot of research in our department. If you ever want to start researching your homes, your, you know, your background, your family, come see us. I'm from Los Angeles, and my sister-in-law's an actress. And she said to me, Robin, my family is from Bucks County. I'm like, really? Anyway, her matey name is Strong, and there's a little town in, up in Haycock called Strongtown, and her family settled that. And I was able to go back for her and do a bunch of research. One other thing I wanted to tell you quickly about, the other big thing I've done as Recorder of Deeds in eighteen months, is I started this fraud alert system. Commissioner Marsaglia called me one day, and she said, Robin, I saw on television for nine dollars and ninety-five cents a month, this company will protect a person's deed. I said to Gail, how, I don't understand that. So we went to our company, which is Landex, and we asked them to write us a program for all of you. And this is a program that really helps with identity theft, and it's free. And you can sign up, there's the, and we have the little cards we leave out here with the link on it. I can do it. I said to Jim, I have to be able to do it or forget it. And I can do it, and I can't do anything without my daughter, and I did that by myself. So, anyway, it really does help with identity theft. I knocked on one of my neighbor's door to tell him about this, and he said, you're not going to believe this, Robin. He said, but I own a home in Warrington outright. And I announced it to my family that I have this home, and now I'm going to get all the money from the rent. And he said, a few months later, he got paperwork in the mail that someone had taken out a second mortgage on this house that he owned straight out, like a home equity loan. And it took him two years and a hundred thousand dollars to correct this. If he had been signed up for our fraud alert system, which wasn't in existence then, the minute his niece recorded that at our office, he would have been alerted, and we would have been able to help him do something about it. So it helps in that way. I had another woman tell me this weekend that she has a family member that does crazy things, and she calls our office, the woman does, every so often, to make sure nothing has been recorded in her name. This way, she is going to know right away. We sweep this every fifteen to twenty minutes. And I did tell you this is free, right? This is free. So I hope you'll all sign up. Deed processing notice, I'm not going to go through this. This is the most important picture, or whatever, from the PowerPoint. This is our social media. I don't have three hundred followers on Facebook yet. I do this every week, I'm at two ninety-eight. So you can follow us on Facebook and learn a lot about the county. We put a lot of wonderful items on there, like recycling events, and flu shots, and all kinds of stuff, and things going on in the Recorder of Deeds office. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share what we're doing. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I have a question.
What is the donation that all the townships or boroughs have been giving you?
Well, it goes from Falls gave us five thousand, Ivyland gave us four, Warwick gave us two, Doylestown Borough gave us two fifty.
Give you a number down.
Gave us five hundred. Buckingham gave us five hundred. Do you believe I can remember that?
Yes.
Everything that we have been given.
We'll discuss with council tonight.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we give you a donation.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I'll come back with, you know, with the book, and we'll get a picture.
Yes.
I do have a question, because I heard your presentation at Rotary Club about a year ago. And at that time, I.
I've come a long way, huh?
Yeah, you were very good then also.
Thank you.
But at that time, I questioned on the transfers in the Courier, transfers of deeds, and it used to have the address and the buyer and seller. And for some reason, in the borough's listing, it's always like a title company or partnership or something. And you said you looked into it, and you did, and it was good for a long time. But now it's going back to that, if you look on Sunday's real estate paper, and you look under Bristol Borough, you cannot tell which houses are sold, because they're, you know, it might be a lawyer's office or title company's office. So can you look into that again?
Yes.
And I know it's something with the filing, because they can file it different ways.
Yeah, sometimes people, they would call it maybe straw purchase, if someone does not want.
Wow.
This, it's not straw purchase, these are actual lawyer offices and title company offices that are listed, because that's the way they're sending it. I think that's the way they're sending it in, so.
With the deal with the Courier Times, they said we can redact. You know, the Courier Times doesn't want us to redact, but sometimes we have, like, maybe a plaintiff's victim or something like that, but I don't want the name on the paper, it's dangerous. So even with them, it's unfortunate that if it's public information, so if the way it's presented to us is the way it was sent to the paper, it's going to be different. So I think it's the whatever way the lawyers are choosing to write the document of, it's the way it's appearing.
Well.
We'll check in.
I know it got better, but now it's back to the old ways, and all the communities want that way.
And I know we had a little problem with the Courier Times the past couple weeks, because I've gotten a couple complaints that they weren't in there, so we'll look into it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to that show up. Not to ask you to put it up, I don't think wants to come out here and put it up. All right, Karen, let's go to public participation. So anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to podium, say your name and address for the record. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium. Go ahead.
I've got three things. One, the pine trees are hanging over the cars on Trenton Avenue, and they're dripping sap, and the sap is extremely hard to get off of cars. I tried with a bug and tar remover, and I couldn't get it off. I had to take it to Randy Esposito, who does wonderful work over on Farragut Avenue, at his body shop, and he had to use a special solvent to get that off the car. So if the borough can trim those trees back, it'll be saving a lot of people's cars finishes. So.
Are they arch trees, Jimmy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll love that.
They're right along, they're curbing, you know, where you park across the street.
In the pocket parking.
Yes. They're overhanging.
Okay. I'll have you send somebody out tomorrow to look at it.
Okay. That's one thing. The second thing is, again, up on Trenton Avenue, at the end of Garfield Street, there was a water tower, and the four pillars are still there, but they're dilapidating. And that water tower was used by the Pennsylvania Railroad when they had steam engines to fill their boilers. So from a historical perspective, Lincoln, since he traveled here by train, his train would have had to come up to that water tower to refill its boilers. And that used to, those four pillars used to house a wooden, wooden tower, a wooden water tower with a wooden spout. And as a kid, I can remember the Pennsylvania Railroad steam engines pulling up along there when the waste station was there, and they would fill their boiler tanks. And it's just falling into disrepair, and I was talking to Bill Pez about it, and he thought it would be a good idea from a historical perspective, and also from a beautification point of view, to rebuild that tower from wood. So I don't know if that can be done or not, but if we could get some.
If Bill can raise some money, we can do anything.
Get some volunteers. It would add to the community and also preserve part of its history. And then the last thing is, I would suggest for the council to set some goals for the town. For example, let's say we wanted a cleaner town. If the council would set a goal and more or less get input from the citizenry, how many, when you're walking down a sidewalk or the path, how many pieces of trash will you pick up? Which is, you know, a little off to this way, a little off to that way. And I walk my dog down the path to Farragut Avenue, and every night, I pick up four to five pieces, cups from Wawa or bottles of Gatorade, plastic, which I put into recycling. So if the town could set some goals for the citizenry to adopt, it would sure, it would, and if the citizenry would buy into that, it would improve the town tremendously. And there could be other goals, you know, along cost efficiency or safety, but whatever. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jimmy. I want to go back to this side, I think somebody was walking up. I want to go back to this side, I think somebody was walking up.
Hi, my name is Al from Kula. I'm here with my wife and my daughter and my son-in-law. We, uh, we're one of the happy residents at one oh eight, at one oh six Basements, Basin Park, right across from the river. We've been up here a few other times and, uh, we finally moved in this weekend, but it took us a year to, to prepare for the move. And, uh, we spent a lot of time talking to the neighbors. We go to St. Mark's Church and, uh, the neighbors have passed our house and they waved to us and we waved to them. And they're telling me what a wonderful, wonderful place Bristol Borough is to live in. And we're finding that to be true. We want to thank all you people, especially Ralph, doing a great job. Uh, we do have, I don't know whether to be concerned or not, I know you're, you're putting it, expanding the highway be- right behind our houses. And, uh, is that, are they going to do a presentation tonight, Ralph?
Say, I can't hear you.
Are they going to do a presentation tonight?
I'm not.
On, on new highway?
The road behind.
Why in the creation street?
No, we had no intention to.
Oh, I see. Okay, well, we, they were out there the other day marking the, the grass and the sidewalks.
Yeah, it's going out to bid. Uh, we don't know what the bids are going to come in at. And before anything's done, there will be a meeting with, as we, uh, promised, with, uh, Mr. Ben Treska.
Okay, great. Well, we, uh-
You would like to be there, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, we definitely would because it concerns us. Maybe I shouldn't be concerned. That's the question, should we be concerned? I mean, it's coming right-
Oh, you knew about this before you went to settlement?
We knew that you were entertained.
Winding that route. That was, that was discussed way before you went to settlement, you were aware of it. Mr. Ben Treska was aware of it, that that road needs to be widened, it's just too small. Uh, I don't know what, you know, isn't like this something that you're just finding out now?
We weren't, we weren't sure if it was going to happen. Now we can see that it is going to happen.
Well, we needed to get funding for it. That was the issue and the borough finally got funding for that project.
Great, that's terrific. I know everything you do here is, is based on common sense and the right thing to do for the borough. We appreciate that. But I have a few questions, may I ask them?
Sure.
My number one is, uh, why? Because the road, why are you winding it?
Why? Because if you're down there, when there's cars coming in both directions, you can't make the turn coming down from Mill Street.
I agree totally. Just take that corner off, in my opinion, that would solve that problem. But, well, you know, we're going to, the next question is, uh, is when?
When will it be done?
Yes.
Well, there's a couple issues. One is, we got to see what the bids come in. I think they're due October ninth. When's that bid's coming? Kurt?
Thursday. Thursday.
That's the ninth?
That's the tenth.
Nine, nine, it's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. Ninth, so the bids are coming in on the ninth. Depending on where they come in, if they're within budget, then we'll proceed. But the other problem is, we have a tree lighting and parades and all that coming. We don't want to interfere with that. So it's possible this project may start after the first of the year.
Okay.
But hopefully be done for the spring.
Once again, Ken- Thank you, Ralph, you're doing a great job. Also, I'd like to know is that the telephone poles, or electrical poles, there's two of them, are they staying or are they going away?
The ones being moved, the one is staying.
As you make the, as you make the right-
As you make the right, that pole will be moved.
Yeah. And, uh, okay, so we, we hope that it'll, it'll all work out well for us.
Man, I ca-, after the meeting, if you want to sit down or one day this week, we could show you or Kurt, we could explain to you what's going on, but it's not going to be a highway next to your house, but it's, it's something that has to be done.
Okay, okay, Ralph, why?
That entire parking lot needs to be redone. We're trying to figure out how to get money to do that.
Meaning the large lot. Well, once again, I want to thank you, especially you, Ralph, you're doing a tremendous job. And, uh, one last question, do you feel we need to be concerned about anything in this project?
No, I don't.
The one time they were talking about putting fences up, a huge fence that-
I don't think you're going, I mean, Kurt, if you want to explain something to them after, you know, I want to keep this meeting going because it's already, you know, ten after eight, we didn't get into council.
Hello, Jessica.
But if you want Kurt to talk to you and your family tonight, he can.
Terrific. Thank you. Once more, you're all welcome, stop by the house, we'll whip in some tea or maybe a martini, right?
Thanks, Al.
You're welcome. One oh, one oh eight.
All right, anybody else on this side of the room before I move over?
All right, back on this side of the room. Go to the podium, state your name and address.
Uh, good evening, my name's Steve Ambrosio. I live at six forty-four Bath Street, the corner of Howell. Uh, for the last ten years, my wife and I and my neighbors have been able to utilize the majority of Howell Street to park vehicles and whatnot. And recently, uh, that seems to have been rezoned, where it used to be about a fifteen-foot area up to the corner where you shouldn't park. That's been extended over fifty feet back through almost the rest of the block. So I wanted to ask the council, uh, what I could do to have that addressed and if there's any way we could possibly have it adjusted to get some of it back.
So let me explain the, what's your name again?
Steve.
Steve. Mr. Goslin called me regarding this issue and Ms. Rodriguez's been on top of this issue.
Okay.
I met at, first of all, across the street from your property, there's, uh, curb and sidewalk was totally destroyed.
Yep.
People were falling, we had some trip and falls. We don't own that property. So the borough went out and leaned the property, put all new sidewalk in and we cut the grass.
Mm-hmm.
What's happening is when the tractor trailers come down thirteen, off of thirteen, they got to make their right on the Howell Street.
Yep.
They're going over that curb because there's cars parked too close to Bath Street. So they can't make that turn. The only chance they have of making it, they got to go over the sidewalk. So the Public Works Director went out and painted the line, extended the yellow line so it would make it easier for the tractor trailer to make the turn.
Okay.
Me and the manager went out about a month ago and he's been in and out for the last month or so. We think there's two cars that could park there. We feel, and I met with Betty out there the other day, we feel that you can add a third car.
Okay.
I don't think you're going to add a fourth car because we're going to go back into that same problem. But you need to add that third car back further, not towards Bath, back towards going down Howell Street.
Okay.
So we're looking at that. Hopefully, you know, that can be something we could get resolved and then paint some of that yellow curb white again.
That'd be good. Is, uh, to your point about parking one spot behind it, there's people coming up on the back end of my lawn now.
Right.
To kind of wedge in a, you know, a work truck or whatever.
I think if we line it and we, we hash mark it just in three spots, it'll define that that area.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That's what we're hoping.
All right, thank you.
Just so you know, Mr. Maldonado did call me about your concern.
I know he did, yeah.
Okay. No way you'd think he didn't, but he did.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, who, who owns that property that we leaned?
That we leaned?
Yeah.
Well, a fellow that's been in jail for ten years and he's due to stay in jail for another twenty-five or so.
Not police, is it? Oh, okay. I remember.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Pezz.
Give me. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be brief. I know some of you guys don't eat dinner until after the meeting, so, uh, but there are a couple of things that are timely that I want to announce. First, uh, I've been contacted by the county by Margie McKevitt. The county has been awarded a grant from HUD for lead remediation in, in homes in the borough. Uh, and they want to make sure that the people in the borough are aware of that. If your home was built, uh, prior to nineteen seventy-eight, uh, there's a good chance that there's, which is Bristol, uh, you allow you to live in one of Ralph's houses, one or the other, right? Uh, but if your home was built prior to nineteen seventy-eight, uh, you have the potential for lead and, uh, and apparently now there, there's an opportunity to get some funding to have that remediated. The county's going to roll it out on, on Thursday morning at nine o'clock in Bristol Borough and, uh, they'll be, be providing more details and we just want the public to know that that program is out there and you should, uh, take advantage of it and keep your children safe. Uh, I'd like to give you a brief update on the partnerships that Raising the Bar and the borough has formed with, uh, with other organizations, the Department of Community and Economic Development. As you know, we were awarded an unprecedented two facade grants in the past, in the past couple of years. And, uh, we decided to push our luck, and when I say unprecedented, no one in the state has gotten two. And very, very, very few, uh, towns have gotten any. Uh, we decided to push our luck, uh, and, and go for a third round of funding. Uh, the program is intended to assist downtown commercial districts. We petitioned this year to expand the district. So this year, our application includes, uh, the first two blocks of Otter Street, the first block of Bath Street, uh, the first five blocks of Pond Street and the first block of, first two blocks of Ratcliffe, in addition to Mill and Market. So we've, we've expanded the reach to try to get more commercial facade, uh, enhanced. And, uh, again, I want to stress that we, there's no guarantees, we don't know if we're, we're going to get the grant, but we have reason to be optimistic. A, a couple of months ago, about a month and a half ago, the Secretary of the Department of Community and Economic Development for, for the state visited Bristol Borough to see our progress and he liked it very much. Uh, I thought that was the end of it and then two weeks ago, his assistant, uh, Rick Velelo, who is the, the Deputy Secretary for DCED, visited the borough. They, he asked for a tour, uh, we took him, uh, Mayor Saxon joined us. He loved what he saw on the street in terms of how we implemented the previous grants. We took him to the riverfront, he was absolutely blown away by the docks. And then we took him along the monuments and we, we, we ended at the, uh, the ring that you all know is, is the spot where the Delaware Canal, uh, State Park ends. And, um, and that ring was the foundation for the crane that offloaded cargo from the, from the canal barges to the ships and go out, go out to the world. Uh, we told him that we thought it would be really cool, you know, when people, people who are canal enthusiasts and historic enthusiasts want to walk that canal and when they get to that last mile, uh, i- it ends in Bristol. And, uh, we think that the reconstruction of a simulated crane, you know, an erector set type thing, not, not the real crane, would be an, an attraction, especially with the proper kind of, uh, proper kind of signage. And he was enthusiastic about that as well. What we've told, what, I'm, I'm happy to see that you, you have an agenda item to appoint, uh, someone from the borough to the Delaware Canal, uh, to the Delaware State Park Advisory Board. Uh, that would be great representation for the borough and I hope whoever that person is, uh, will be an advocate for these kinds of things and I'm sure he or she will be. Uh, so the, uh, the Secretary Viallo, uh, is a former mayor of Lock Haven, Pennsylvania. So he understands small towns, he understands what we're up against and he understands the progress we've made. He was very enthusiastic. So I think we're going to, I think we're going to do something with that. He also brought PBS Channel thirty-nine with him that day and they did a really nice video of the borough, which has now been on broadcast on TV. The point is that our pitch to DCED is that we can make Bristol Borough a poster child. We can make it a, a, a model for what, what state programs can do for small towns. We're demonstrating that when, when they give us the grant, we use it well and, and I think success be, breeds success. Uh, finally, Bristol Borough was featured recently in a Reader's Digest article on the oldest towns in America. And, uh, the nice thing about it is, if you, and, and we are featured as the oldest town in Pennsylvania. Uh, they, they, when you get to that online, there's a link, you click on the link for Bristol and it takes you to more details about Bristol Borough. And those details were provided by Visit Bucks County, a county agency. And I'm telling you that because it's another partnership that we've cultivated with them. Now, you know, there was a time when people didn't know Bristol Borough existed. Now every publication they put out, and they do a great job, includes some kind of reference to Bristol Borough restaurants or riverfront or whatever it might be. Uh, we're going to go to their, we go to their annual luncheon, they give us grants. You bet we go to their annual luncheon. Their annual luncheon is Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday in Warrington and, uh, we're going to be represented there by the contingent of borough, uh, Raising the Bar people and businessmen. And we'll be, uh, continuing to lobby for things to come to Bristol Borough. Two more quick points, the website that we sponsor, uh, visitbristolborough.com, uh, got three point nine thousand hits in August. Okay? Three, three thousand nine hundred people in August visited our website to see what was going on in Bristol Borough. And there's other analytics to tell you about whether, how long they stayed and what, on the, on the site and what other pages they, they delved into, into the site, but it's certainly a good sign. Uh, in September, we took one target day and we had three hundred and fifty hits on September fourteenth. So, uh, that's a good thing. We want to keep that going. And the final thing, um, on October twenty-third, Raising the Bar sponsors seminars for businesses to, uh, assist them in being successful. And we do that in partnership with Bucks County, with the Business Department of Bucks County Community College. On October twenty-third, uh, when I, when I wrote my book, I, I mentioned this and I'm happy to see that it's become a, a real thing. I said there were three businesses in the borough that start at one, CBM, Bristol Fuel started in nineteen forty-six, Lou, and Caesar started in nineteen forty-seven and Mignoni started in nineteen forty-seven. They're still in operation, uh, and we have real live people who can talk about them. And together they represent a hundred and twenty-three years of business experience. So while we have provided, uh, seminars in the past on how to use social media, how to deal with customer service and things like that, we thought it would be a good idea for anybody in business or thinking about starting a business to come to that seminar that night and listen to Lou and Carol Ferguson and Rosemary Mignoni and, uh, Donnie Pitt talk about what wisdom they have gained and what advice they have for business, for longevity, to go through the highs and the lows. So that's free, it's October twenty-third at the Center for the Arts. I forget what time, we'll put it on Facebook. You know what time, Lou?
I'm not sure. Six o'clock, but I'm not-
Probably seven o'clock. So that's it. Uh, thank you very much for all you guys and folks who, ladies are doing and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
So, just to pick up a little bit on what Bill said is, I mean, you have Robin here from the Reporter of Deeds who walks in, knows none of us never met before and talks about how beautiful this building is. And don't forget, if you go back fifteen years ago, we took a lot of criticism to spend the money to fix this building to make it what it is today. A lot of people thought it was a waste of space to spend. But I think it's the people, like Bill mentioned, from out of town, who really appreciate when they come in town, what this town has to offer. Because we do have so much here to offer. People that came to the Do-Op this year said, "I can't believe what this town, you know, has to offer." I mean, we're here constant, we're at different restaurants. They walk Mill Street, they, some people take, drive here and take their bikes and they just ride around town on their bicycles. So it's, it's a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication that took a lot of years to get to this point. And I think that the thing is with Raising the Bar and all the people that really were dedicated to this, you start seeing the light now at the end of the tunnel and I'm proud just to be a small part of this. So, thank you, Bill, and everybody that's involved and thank you for complimenting us on our building. I appreciate it. Okay, anybody else on this side of the room, go to the podium, state your name?
I love the theater, too.
Good evening, everybody. Michael Gorman, three oh nine Mill Street. I just have a couple of quick things, uh, just to remind people in town that, uh, the scareco-, the scarecrow contest on Mill Street, uh, those, the scarecrows will be placed this week. So it's a great opportunity to bring your family out and, uh, look at those and enjoy them. Uh, we have, uh, twenty applicants this year, so each year it's growing and, uh, so make sure you see that. Secondly, uh, the Drag Bingo, it's the fifth annual Drag Bingo. It's a great night, uh, October thirtieth, it's grown, uh, it's, uh, the Firehouse Three on Mifflin, uh, great, great night, fun night. And lastly, I just want to give a shout out to a group of, um, Bristolians just took it upon themselves, um, just from all the tapping and doing it, uh, and actually went out, I don't know if anyone saw it, but the two areas as you come in town where they're putting the new Wawa, they went out there and cleaned that up and it never looked that good. So, um, they wanted to remain nameless, but they knew who they are and thank you for keeping Bristol Borough beautiful and keep the work going. There were two other groups that went down along the river and cleaned up, so I just wanted to say, uh, thanks and let's keep, uh-
Thanks for all your help, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else on this side of the room?
John Rosen, Green Lane. I just want to offer a suggestion. I know you guys want to adopt the ordinance for that stop sign on Green Lane and Broadell Path. In my opinion, I live there. I see a traffic backup every morning past that intersection, almost to the church. So if, I might offer a suggestion. You put the stop sign at Ash Avenue and Green Lane. I think it's a good idea for a stop sign. But I just don't think it's in an appropriate area. You got the traffic coming out of Wawa. You got the red light right there. It's just too close, and it's going to congest everything. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. That is public participation. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see anybody else talking. You must have been hiding all night.
Yeah, Ralph.
You must have been hiding. I didn't even see you.
You didn't see me?
Good evening. Ken Vexler, Cleveland Street. Glad to see Mr. Dillon back. Hope you're doing well. And I'm glad you recognized Ginny Burton, great volunteer in Bristol. We're going to surely miss her. Saw her down at the Do-Op just days before she died. Sad. But I, but I'm surprised that you didn't mention another staple in Bristol that we lost this past month was Ralph Radcliffe.
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I mentioned, I'm not sure.
No, I didn't hear Ralph Radcliffe.
Not me.
Oh, okay. Well, he was, okay.
If I didn't.
Yeah, he was, you know, as people know, for decades, formed a cleanup for the canal, very dedicated to that. Didn't look for any recognition or accolades or anything like that. But he did it for many years, probably into his 80s. He was 93 when he died. But anyhow, that's, I wanted to just touch on that. Just a couple of things. I don't know if anybody else throughout town noticed the streetlights that are on 24 hours a day throughout town. Do you notice all those streetlights?
Yes.
I called a couple of times, and I know, I realize we have an agreement or a set amount. We pay PICO every year, but it's still a waste. Like, they're going to burn out. They have to be replaced.
I think the problem is, Ken, the guy that takes care of them was out for like three weeks or more. He had surgery. And we don't want to go to an outside.
Oh, there's only one guy that can change them?
One guy. He's.
Oh, okay. So he's back to work now, though?
He's back. He's struggling a little bit, but, you know, we'll focus on that.
Okay, good.
We're focusing on the ones that aren't lit, okay? That's first.
Yeah, that's important, too.
We'll take care of it.
I was just surprised, because I told her just a few right around my block. And then I was, I was running through town thinking, wow. What's that?
It's the photo cell. It's an easy fix.
All right, that's, no, I'm glad. I hope he gets to take care of it. The other thing I wanted to ask was, it's been months since the Firehouse funding. Anything happening with that, or is that decided?
No. There's still a share sitting in Limbo.
Oh, so they went four ways, and you still have one waiting?
I said before that everybody got everything they were supposed to get, except one share, I think it's 28,000 or 26,000, is sitting in escrow. We're trying to get that resolved. There's a Fireboard meeting this month. I want to go speak. There's a couple of proposals that are on the table. Some from, what's the, the Firehouse and Hareman, what's their number?
53.
53.
25, 53, yeah.
Mr. Albright made a proposal to me to present. Again, I didn't have time to have a meeting with anybody. I asked Herbie, we could set something up. Hopefully, we can get something done by the 29th for this Fireboard meeting to meet maybe with the four companies. If not, then it's going to, I just think council's going to have to make a decision in November, December, just get this resolved. But I know there's talk going on. We voted to bring in the state for a talk about a merger. Am I right, Mr. Saxon? Would you want to explain to Kenny where you're at?
Yeah, we're exactly where Ralph said. We, this goes back to May at the Fireboard meeting. All four companies, all four stations agreed that it would be a four-way split at that point and hold the other share until some decision was made. And at that meeting, Ralph had asked the different companies to get back to them. Since then, council at the last meeting has taken upon themselves to be part of the DCED survey that's going to be done, which is an assessment of what fire protection we need in Bristol Borough. So with all that going on, you know, we're not ready to move forward.
So some on the state level stepping in and going to advise, like, a town this size, how much, how many stations or how much equipment is really.
You got it. This will be about the fourth time that that's been done since 1907.
So let's hope this time it's successful, then.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a reason, because I don't remember us making allocations. Is that something that council needs to approve? Why would we only do four and not five? I don't remember that coming in front of.
Didn't come up yet for a vote.
Okay. So why would the other, why would four of them get their allocation, but the fifth one wouldn't?
Because that's the dispute. The dispute is that there are really only four stations in town, not five.
Okay. But who, the dispute is who makes that decision? Is it us, or is it the Fireboard?
Firemen.
The Fireboard makes that decision?
Herbie, why don't you explain to Tony where that is? That the fire company, the three fire companies are contesting the allocation.
Yeah, and this has been going on for 20 years. So there was supposed to be a merger. And out of that merger, after time, the three fire companies felt that there was actually four operational fire units in town. And that the money, because of that, the money should be divided up by four and not by five. And so finally, this year, we got to make some progress on that.
Who was, who made the decision that it was going to be four and not five? Has that ever happened before? Have we ever allocated just to four in the past?
I don't know what you mean, Tony.
I'm saying, we've always, we've always recognized allocation between five. I'm saying, have we ever in the past just paid four and then stuck the other one in Limbo?
No. Because the company that got the money got their share that they're claiming is one company. So that the money will either go to them, they'll get two shares, or there's a proposal on the table that, I want to talk to the fire companies this week. If they agree, then I'll bring it back to council in November for a vote.
Right. I just thought that that would be a decision that was made by council.
It is. We can't make it.
It already got made. It sounds like four already got paid, right?
There's a.
Is the fifth one okay with it when they're at the Fireboard? Is the fifth company okay? They are?
There's only, there's only actually four companies come to the Fireboard.
Okay. Well, then, the mayor's talking about, yes, the fifth's okay with it, but there's only four.
Four stations.
Four stations.
Oh, okay.
Five companies, four stations.
Allegedly.
Well, I guess the question is, is the fifth company.
Let me just interrupt everybody. Let me finish with Mr. Vexler as a discussion for council.
All right. All right. The last thing I have is I'm going to follow up with last month's discussion we met after, in the conference.
About my statement?
Yes.
You were 150% correct.
I was correct?
Correct. You played the tape. I heard what I said.
I played the tape. That, yeah, that's just to put, I was going to speed on it, that Mr. Polyafco, school director, school board director, asked about when the rent would be paid off, the 660,000 a year going, coming from, in the debt service, where's that money going to go? Can it be used for recreation?
I said it's going to go back into the capital budget.
You said it can't, cannot be transferred to another account or general fund or anything. But you told, but you told Mr. Lutz that when they, the previous road resurfacing loan was paid off, he asked you where the money was going, and you told him it went into the general fund. So what, which is correct, then, is what you told Mr. Lutz? Maybe, Jim, or Mr. Dillon? Okay.
When the, that debt service, first of all, you know, 15 years ago, 51% of the Borough's tax revenue was going to pay off debt service, okay?
Okay.
So this council, I think, has not incurred any debt really since that time. When that bond was paid off, okay, the millage for the following year decreased for the debt service, but it was increased for the general fund.
Right.
To do things like pay the police, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Right, to balance the budget. Right, without raising taxes. And that's what I said.
Right.
Right, without having to, well, indirectly raise taxes. Because like Ralph said to Jeff Polyafco, that.
So your question was, did I say the money went into the general fund, correct? Is that the question?
Well, my question was.
You played the tape. I agreed with you. So where do you want to bring?
So what I'm getting at, I just want to know, which is, which is it, then?
You told me that the money cannot be put into the general fund. You cannot take that money. Now, what I said, I, it was incorrect. You can't do that. Okay? I may have said it. Look, did you ever say something that you made a mistake what you said?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm admitting to you.
And I appreciate that.
I'm admitting to you that I made that mistake.
But Mr. Dillon's saying that it was done. They took.
No, he's not saying that money was transferred.
He's saying they took.
He said the millage stayed the same.
No, the millage changed from debt service to the general fund.
Exactly.
So.
Okay. So that doesn't mean the money went into that account.
The money wasn't transferred? The money wasn't?
No, it was lower into debt service, okay?
Right.
The general fund, the mills, let's say it was two mills each way. Two mills in here, two mills reduced here. Taxes stayed the same. You don't take that money and put it there. You're saying, I said we transferred the money into that account.
That's what you said.
Well, and that.
But what I'm saying is, what Mr. Polyafco asked you, it's 660,000 a year. What is that? Five mills, six mills? I don't know. Whatever it is. He's asking, can some of that money go into recreation? And you're saying, no. That money has to go back to the taxpayers. But it didn't go back to the taxpayers nine, 10 years ago.
It did. It did.
Or we have to raise the rates.
What's that?
You're not listening. The rec, the, was it recreation?
Back then.
No, it was a road resurfacing loan that was paid off.
The, the millage for that tax was reduced. The millage for the general fund was increased. Okay? So it wasn't transferred, okay? It was just.
Well, I don't mean to chime in. I reported the protocol of the meeting. I don't remember anybody asking Mr. Flora to jump back. I don't remember at all. You're just going by the rules that you set.
Mr. Vexler, I answered your question.
All right. All I'm saying is, so the money was transferred.
And whatever you say, it was transferred. It was transferred. In your mind, it transferred.
Do you want me to play?
No. You don't need to play anything.
Well, he was wrong. He was wrong.
All right. Well, I'm just saying, well.
He misspoke.
Well, I'm saying.
He misspoke. And there's.
Mr. Vexler, do you have anything else?
No, that's.
You're fine.
I think it's public.
In the interest of time, I'll fix.
Thank you.
Just some quick thank yous. I want to thank the Bristol Lions Club for coordinating Italian Day and all the vendors and attendees that were there. It was one of the greatest Italian days in the town. So can always be very proud of it. I want to thank Ralph and Anna Laracy for coordinating the Do-Op concert. I want to thank Merle and Mr. Dillon and George Waldron and the Public Works crew. I'd also like to thank Fred Cullen, Angelo Vincent Quatrochi and CBM for providing the operation and equipment for moving some of that heavy equipment down there in preparation of the Do-Op concert. And also, like was mentioned before, I walked up from leaving the Do-Op concert, and there was Virginia at Mill Street, you know, a smile on her face. She was having a ball, and she was there from, I passed her 12 o'clock noon. She was directing people to bring down, how to set their chairs up. So we really lost a real, a real Borough champion there. I'd like to thank Joanna Snyder and Mr. Dillon and Merle and George and the crew for the Calmar Nickel Tall Ship from Delaware. The ship had sold out their cruises for their stay here, and they are very anxious in coming back again. And there's people that were really thrilled with our docking facility. And to compliment Gilmore Associates, they said the design is the best on, the best design of docking facility in the Delaware and Chesapeake area. And like was mentioned before, the Grundy Library had the answering the call, Bristol's first responders. That goes on until Saturday, November 2nd. It was, it was really nice to see the, on their opening day, the firemen, the policemen, all there. And there's a historical review there. Amazing, some of the pictures. Bristol Day is coming up on the 19th, rain or shine. And like Nick had mentioned, you can go to www.bristolhistory.com, and you can preload their program for that day's events. Last month, Mr. Devine proposed an ordinance without any previous discussion. It was to ban vaping in our buildings. And there had been many articles on how states and local governments are handling this issue. And I was thinking we should be aware of what the state's doing beforehand. That's the first I heard of the Borough doing anything. And I admit that I'm usually skeptical when Mr. Devine presents something without any prior discussion. However, I think I should have asked to have that motion tabled to find out more about it. But at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Devine to reintroduce his anti-vaping ordinance, and I would gladly second that motion. That's it. That's it.
Mr. Glipad, you're right.
Thank you. The Bristol Alumni and Athletics Association, the BAA, the great organization, scholarship for kids and the teachers, help the schools out and everything. They're having their general membership meeting tomorrow at 7:00 at the Borough Pub, second floor. It's $10 for a year membership. Tomorrow, you will get an appetizer and a free drink, thanks to the club. And my brother runs this organization, and he hopes, hopes you all attend. An involved membership is central to the mission of keeping the tradition of Bristol Athletics and our commitment to the youth of the community through scholarships, through graduating seniors, and through grants to coaches, advisors, and classroom teachers. Totally non-political, lot of fun. Tomorrow night, we're going to have, they always have a guest, guest speaker, Pat Savatini, young Pat Savatini. He's a champion in the mixed martial arts. So he should be a very interesting speaker. So if you can make that tomorrow night at the Borough Pub, 7:00, you're more, everybody's welcome, even if you're not a Bristol alumni, as am I so. Thank you.
Just speaking about the lights, we have received several calls about the lights that stay on all the time. And when we forward them over to George, he's been taking care of them. So there have been some calls about that. On the 500 block of Pond behind where the trail meets, PICO has replaced some of the light posts out there. And I don't know if we had a light, and they took it down. it down, but I'd like to see if we could revisit that area and see about putting a light back there. Some of the people that live there are complaining it's really dark in the back there and we do have people that walk through there at nighttime. Um, the street sweeper is running. This is a phone call we get all the time or on Facebook or they're texting me or it's still running. We haven't decided to stop it. As long as the weather is nice, we keep it going. I mean, we need to. But, um, it's really your responsibility to be aware if it's coming or not. And if it's coming, then move your vehicles and you won't get a ticket. The only time it doesn't come down your street, unfortunately, is when it's broken down. So just keep out, an eye out because the street sweeper is still running. Um, and that's it.
So just to jump on what Betty's saying is, the, the street sweeper usually runs until Thursday of Thanksgiving, which I think this year is the twenty-seventh. So that Thursday, the borough's closed Thursday and Friday, that's the end, there's no more street sweeper. The reason it's not running, as she said, it's been breaking down. We're looking into purchasing probably a new, new street sweeper because it has been down, it's been very costly to keep this thing running. So that's, that's on the street sweeper. And I'll just continue since, um, here, uh, the fire board meeting we talked about that's on my list. Uh, there was a kickball program last year at the borough that, and they wanna get this program running again and they have registration scheduled for tomorrow. So they wanna make it a borough sanctioned program so they don't have to go get insurance and, and, uh, cost the borough residents. I wanna run this program under our recreation. I think it's for young kids and even adults in this program. So if council doesn't have a problem with that tonight, I'd like to put that, make that a motion to approve this kickball program sanctioned by Bristol Borough. And, uh, Stacy Dragon will, will handle it. Mr. Pett, you talked about this HUD thing. There's a press conference here, uh, on Thursday. And just so you know, I met with, uh, Joe DiFelice about a week or so ago and about this program prior to them scheduling this press conference. And I took him for a ride through town and I showed him Chester and Elm Street. And I think it's a great area to redevelop. And, uh, there's no guarantee, but at some point, there may be somebody coming out of the White House that handles, uh, the HUD program that we may be meeting with here in Bristol. I'll keep council informed and the mayor, the chief, what's going on. But if we can get him here, there's a lot of money to redevelop these areas. And I think that would be a great, because there'll be a mixed use of low income and it just won't be, uh, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollar homes. They, maybe we could come up with a, a program with them. So keep our fingers crossed and let's keep that going. The Mason Street bid opening, I said earlier, is October ninth. And the bridge, uh, bid opening is October thirty-first. That's the bridge that goes over, uh, Maple Street, uh, behind the Borough Street and Howie Department. The other thing is, we met with a couple of school board members and they came back to the borough and they wanted to increase the size of this shed that, that they had approved for a thirty by forty building for the school district. And, uh, they wanna increase that building to forty by sixty. So I'm going to make it, put on agenda tonight to make a motion to increase the size of that building to, uh, forty by sixty and, uh, the solicitor could explain more about it, what we already did with, they met with Gilmore, the school district's engineer already, submitted what they needed to do to make this happen, so.
What are the, I mean, obviously I know the, the measurement implications, but what are the implications of, of where it actually?
It really didn't change, where's Kurt at? Kurt, you wanna explain to them what's going on? It really didn't change anything, Kurt. I'll be honest with you, Nick, right?
Yeah, I don't recall the specific plan that council saw when it came through your packets for the land development approval, but the building went bigger. It's still in the same approximate location. I know that the Fire Marshal's Office had a requirement to move the building closer to the street, which is a fire code issue. Um, but it's still in that same proximity next to the track.
When you say approximate location, um, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So it's, it's Long Trent Avenue. If you're facing the track, it's on the right-hand side.
Yep.
It had to be within a hundred and fifty feet of the street.
And that's for access to fire trucks, yes.
But we will still have the path in front of it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you wanna explain the?
Yeah, so when council approved this, the wave appropriate, uh, they approved it in May, at that point, on the drawings was a thirty by forty, twelve hundred square feet. And I think the original drawings had it back further. Uh, I think the, uh, borough engineer and the school district then engineer worked through all the issues with the stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. They moved the building up. Somewhere along the line, they decided they wanted a bigger building. So now it's forty by sixty, so it's ten feet wider and.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet longer. Uh, it's still in the same vicinity, uh, near the walking path to the right of the, uh, track, if you're facing the track. Um, so because of that, I think council needs to just amend their approval to recognize that it's gonna be a larger building.
And the only, I'm sorry, but I was just gonna say, the only things that we're changing our approval on are the size and the approximate location?
Yeah, quite frankly, even if the approximate location had changed that little, I guess, it probably wouldn't have been an issue.
The materials are the same, the structure is the same, the.
As far as we know, I mean, it's, it's, it's been.
And I'm not sure. Coming for building permits yet, so.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think so. Come in and pull their, their building permits. But I met with Mr. Chicalati and Mr., uh, Barolo here and I had Kurt come in and amend in the manager and see if we could work this out to make this, they wanna get this thing ordered, so we're trying to, you know, fast-track this for them.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just wanna make sure, as to Lorraine's question, that there's no implications on the, on the path, really.
What I think is, when Herbie wanted the building brought up closer, the building's still there, they're adding now to the back of it, which would've been empty space back there.
Right. I guess the only other question I have is, how close to the path is it? My, my only concern is that, you know, the path is utilized by a lot of foot traffic, just, you know, people who wanna jog and walk their dogs and, you know, it's gonna be an active area, I'm guessing, so I just don't want that path blocked off to people.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I can. I, I can say with certainty, it's not too close because there's at least a front yard setback and zoning that had to be honored.
So like the fifteen-foot setback or whatever?
I think it's more like twenty-five. It's probably, this thing's probably like more like forty to seventy feet.
Yeah, I have no problem with this. I just, if I don't, I don't have a visual of or, you know, a, a measurement in front of me, I just wanna make sure that I'm not supporting something that would surprise me when it pops up as well, so.
Well, it went in front of zoning and the neighbors came there and spoke in favor of the building.
Yeah, no, I.
But he came out against it, from what I understand.
I, I think it's a good idea. I don't think it's a problem at all. I'm supportive of, and I'm glad we're working well with the school board. I just wanna make sure that when you're jogging down the path, you're, you're not gonna be running through pads and football helmets and whatever else, you know, so.
Lorraine?
Also, the door is on the side, correct, not near the path.
I don't think we've seen architectural drawings yet.
I believe it is. I hope it is.
Okay, I got it. I'm good, thanks.
I don't, I don't know who could answer, whether it's Herb or Kurt. Isn't there, to, to me, the closer it is to the street, the more negative impact it has. And, and even though it's a Fire Marshal issue, isn't there a way, I mean, what if it had a driveway to it?
Well, that was the options that we gave.
We're not.
That they either had to be.
No.
A, a roadway or driveway to get the fire trucks back to where the building was gonna be, or the building had to be within a hundred and fifty feet of, of the roadway, all parts of the building. And generally, that comes back. The pre-connected hose lines on the fire trucks are two hundred feet. So if a fire truck pulls up and he's on Trenton Avenue, he has to be able to stretch that hose line and cover that entire building.
I, I understand that, but it's all open to me, it's.
Can pull right out?
The, the negative impact of having this thing, it, it's a big square building, have it sitting out closer rather than further back is, is not aesthetically pleasing.
I think you would need to look at the site drawing. It really, I don't think it really moves it that, all that much.
It, it really didn't. I mean, it maybe moved it, the length of the building closer. It's about, I'm looking at it now, it's about forty feet back from, from the paved parking area, uh, fifty feet back maybe. And it does have the, at least the large doors for equipment are on the opposite side of Trenton Avenue.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And what's the space between the track and the building, roughly? Maybe fifteen feet? It's not dimensioned, but maybe fifteen feet. And that will all be the schools to maintain or will that, I mean, it's on school property, so yeah. School's building, okay.
Merle?
How much, how much room is it got between the track and the building, Kurt?
Just eyeballing it, maybe fifteen feet.
Because that's the only way an track can get their cleaning equipment into the tunnel under the Adam's Hallow Creek, because.
Mr.. Alright, so let me make a suggestion. Let's, let's vote on approving the building tonight, but meeting again with the school district, I'll meet with Chick and, and Al again and see where this thing's gonna be laid out and make sure that we try to meet everybody's needs here. Because I think fifteen feet off this, the path is really close.
It's forty feet back from the.
Forty feet.
Forty feet back, fifteen feet.
You said fifteen.
No, he said fifteen.
Track, from the track. Track is an oval, it's about fifteen feet over from the oval.
Would it be possible for Greg and I to be at that meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If it's during a day, you'll be there at Grace's School.
Okay.
Alright, any questions? It's for Kurt on his building. I wanna make that an agenda item because they really wanna get this building ordered as soon as possible. Okay, two more things. One, we were approached by, uh, Verizon, they wanna put a cell tower up near our baseball fields and they wanted to put it between the Big Hardball Field and I call the Minor League Field. If you could see the, the drawing on here, and I think it's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year they would give the borough. Me personally, I'm not in favor of it. I mean, I'm not in favor of a cell tower there. They gotta, they said they gotta constantly service it, they'll put down track under the grass so the grass can grow through and when they drive on it, I don't know, I don't know how council feels about it. So it's really, I'll support the decision either way. I know it's twenty-five thousand, we will put towards our REC program every year, but is it something we want?
Are we discussing that now or do you wanna discuss it?
Well, I think they're waiting for an answer, right?
That's number three on the, uh, work session agenda. Uh, they are waiting, uh, for an answer.
No, I meant like literally this moment or, or when we get to number three?
No, we could do, that's something I brought up, so.
So my, my question would be, are, once Verizon's in, are they like, I mean, I know they're a huge utility company, so are they like the railroads in the sense of how we can deal with them? I mean, when this, when the grass is, is overrun, when they fence it in and they don't clean it up, like, are we going to have authority over them the way we do not have?
And stuff we could put in our.
Yeah, I, I don't believe so. But one other thing to understand is, um, this is not zoned, this area's not zoned for cell tower. We've already advised Verizon that even if the borough says they're willing to consider it, they still have to go to zoning and get a use variance. But we figure, why let them waste that time and money if council's not willing to lease the property? So council should make the decision whether they even wanna, even wanna engage them or just say, no, we're not interested.
So how's anybody, how you guys feel?
I don't, I don't like the idea of it.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind the idea, except I just wanna know, is, why did they pick that spot in between?
They wanted it out on Jefferson Avenue and we told them no.
Oh, okay.
They wanted to be as close as they can to Jefferson Avenue and then they wanted to go behind the Little League Field and we told them no. And then we met them out there, uh, a few weeks ago and we asked them if they wanted to put it behind the Big Hardball Field. You see that little square?
Yeah.
They said no. We asked them if they wanted to put it on the other side of the canal, they said no because they gotta access it. So this is the, where they wanna put it. Now, we could say no again, maybe they'll come up with another. But don't forget, there's an eight-foot fence around this, it's like Greg said, it's not.
What is that trail that's leading up to it? What is that?
They gotta break electric and everything in.
I don't get that.
We're, we're trying to get back to, we're trying to get back.
Is there anything, again, this might be a question for the solicitor, um, we're using a controversial word today, is there a way to, you could go to like a quid pro quo, like, since it's near a recreation facility, that you could earmark stuff for recreation that they could help us, you know, build a, you know, better, I'm just for lack of a better term, like a better basketball court or something along those lines? Like, can we, are agreements like that doable?
I'm sure we could go, they'll ask them to put lights on fields. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do, but the first thing is, do we want it or don't we want it?
Right.
If we want it, we'll negotiate the best deal we can for the borough.
I mean, I don't desire it, but I'm wondering if there's stuff that we could, there's stuff that we could do with the money that could come from that? And if we could earmark it specifically, because it's gonna be interrupting a bit of the recreation, uh.
Well, it's back in that corner, so.
I, yeah, I, it's there, is what I'm getting at. So I wonder if, because it's gonna be there.
Forty by forty area they want, or sixty by sixty?
I think it's thirty by forty. It's a pretty big area.
And they're just a huge company, I just, I'm wondering if there's a way to take this, probably not the best looking thing, setback, and then turn it into something that's better for kids, for instance.
You wanna say we can get them here for the next meeting? Maybe before, how about if we do this? See, we can get them here before our next meeting.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Like six o'clock.
Sure.
Okay.
This way we're not tied up for an hour with them.
Absolutely.
Hey, can we get a colored picture of what it looks like? So I can get an idea of.
We'll ask them. Alright?
That's better.
Can it be along the railroad? Because if, if it's accessible on that railroad side, it doesn't bother and I.
On the right side of the Big Hardball Field?
Yes.
We don't know where the right of way is on that property. We know the railroad owns fifty feet of ground. So we don't know where they, we can't give them a lease on railroad property. So we don't know, we would have to get the whole thing surveyed and.
They weren't really interested in going in that direction.
And they also, if you look, there's steps back in that corner that they use to get up to the high lines to work, when their trucks are always back there. So we can't go too far back with that. I never knew the steps were there either, but I guess Comrail and.
The Billy Reserve, we had the tower, we, we made a deal, they put a tower right on, right next to the railroad's property, so the railroad doesn't bother. And when you talk about being close to Jefferson Avenue, it's a hundred and thirty feet near. It's a cell tower. It's not like they're broadcasting to people on Jefferson Avenue.
They must have a weak spot somewhere in this one little area that they need.
They didn't wanna come back in that corner for that reason after they said that meeting.
They even went to Keystone Lighting and, uh, they don't wanna give up any ground. So if they really need to be here, I think we could make a good deal where the borough, it's just a matter of if council wants it or not. If you want it, I could say, have Jim say to them, the council's interested, but they want you to come in to do a presentation. What does it look like, how high it is, what's the finished product look like? And then we can negotiate a fee. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that better.
Okay. Uh, the last thing is, before we, we move on, is I'd like to, to form a, some kind of a development planning committee throughout town. So I think that we have taken this town to a, as far as we could possibly take it at this point. I mean, everybody did what they can do. We got Raising the Bar, you had council, you got other members contributing in every phase that you, you can really think of. So what I'd like to do is form a committee with some school board members, council members, some businesses in town, bankers, solicitor, mayor, Raising the Bar Committee, the Grundy Foundation, members of the community, and then the Sewer Authority, Planning Commission, Redevelopment Authority, County Planning Commission, the borough engineers, some realtors. And I think this committee manned up with maybe like fifty people.
Starting a new team? Or are you starting a new team?
Yeah, maybe. So I think, and some of the issues I'm just throwing out there, and I'm sure that we can add to these things, would be recreation, light, the housing stock, the Mill Street parking lot, the parking problems throughout town, the sewer system, and I think redoing the walking path, which is a major, don't forget, we did a lot in this town, but I think that the council, I think Joe was part of that along with, uh, McCluskey and Goslin and all them guys. That was probably one of the best things that ever was put into this town was the walking path because it's used by everybody. I know the docks were big, but it's used by voters. But this walking path, I think the vision they had to put that in, but it's been many, many years and now, you know, it needs to be repaved, there's roots, there's, you know, sections that need to be redone. So I'd like to form this committee, we're going into the winter, and maybe start doing a short program, something that we could see next year, where are we gonna get the money to do some of these projects and continue moving forward with the committee? So there may be subcommittees, so if anybody at home is interested, you know, send your name into the, the borough that you'd be interested. I know Merle will be part of this, is the emergency management. Uh, I think it's time that we take this to, I know Bill will definitely help in anything we need to do. we need to do. So, let's see where this goes. All right, Jim, what do you have? Let's just go around.
I don't have anything, no.
Bill, you have anything? Lorraine?
I just want to say thank you to Patrick Bowser for picking up dog excrements from the path. And also, I wanted to say that because Mr. Lake was saying that he picks up stuff, but there's a lot of people that walk up and down that path and do clean up. I would appreciate it if most people would pick up their own dog problems. Bags will be placed on the path. They were complaining that there were no bags there, but from here on out, there will be more bags put on. I spoke to George, and he's going to take care of it. I just, I think it's really important that you pick up your own dog's stuff, you know? And that's it.
Greg, before you go, I'm sorry, I got the two chiefs. Herbie, I forgot to go.
Oh, okay. Just two things. One is, this week is fire prevention week, so strongly recommend everybody take the time, test your smoke alarms, test your CO alarms. The fire companies are in the schools, they were in the schools today, they'll be there tomorrow, and they'll be there Wednesday. And also, trying to put together a, an exchange program for the carbon monoxide alarms. It's really become a struggle trying to get out to everybody that needs them, and so we're looking to possibly set something up where if people have older CO alarms, they'll just simply be able to bring them to the fire station and exchange them, and that'll get them out in public a lot quicker.
Good idea.
That's it.
Any questions for Herbie?
Thank you.
Last month, there were 1,100 incidents. It seems the warm weather is keeping us rather busy with our juvenile activity. Also, with school being back in session, we're having a meeting this week with the superintendent and also representatives of the IU. We've had a lot of responses into the school this year, and it's, we're seeing the difference by not having the police officers' presence in there, so we're trying to adjust for that. We have some problem residences in town, and we've been cooperating or getting some assistance from Mr. Miller, and we're targeting them and the landlords if we don't start getting some action. And that's been, looks like we're making some progress on several of them. And I'd be remiss if I didn't echo everybody else's sentiment about Virginia Burton. It's an incredible loss to the police department and to the services of this community, and I just really want to pass our condolences on to Mark and the family. She will be sadly missed. Thank you.
Any questions for a police chief? Okay, Greg?
Just to reiterate again with Virginia, just a side story she explained to me, because she saw when my wife and I got married, on Facebook that we shared an anniversary with her and her husband, and that was the first time I ever really spoke to her, just a really, really nice person, and obviously very, very dedicated. From that point, we just kind of had nice conversations every time I saw her, so she will be missed. A few things that I would like to move on to. First of all, I am certainly not ringing the victory bell just yet, but I would like to just take note of what we're seeing at Mill Run as of late. I still am very sympathetic to the people that live right there. It is obviously a difficult thing for them to have to deal with for the last couple of years, but I am glad to see that since that meeting, I think that a few of us had a couple months ago, where it appeared as if they got a real general contractor on board, and that we made it very clear to them that we're not playing around anymore, we're not giving them the leniency that we once did, they really did seem to turn the corner. And it is exciting, at least at this point in time, to see the progress. As we know, you know, we don't want to ring that bell until it's actually open and things are finished, but I am enthused by what I've seen lately, and I just hope that residents right there can bear with us until we really do cross that finish line. I did have a question about the results. I think, Mr. Dillon, you said that the traffic study was done for the stop sign at Bridle Path?
Yes, the engineer looked at, it does have anything to do with green light.
Okay.
Doesn't have anything to do with green light.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so we, the engineer deemed it necessary, or?
Yes, they've given the recommendation.
Okay. Okay. And then, a few other things, just...
That was requested by some residents.
Sure, sure. No, I'm good, I just wanted to make sure that that is something that the engineer also agreed with. When, so we were, my wife and I were in the city the other night with our children, and, you know, we're seeing all this activity on the waterfront, and just kind of thinking outside the box, and I think we should continue to think, there's a pier, it's called the Cherry Street Pier now, I believe is what it's called, but they have, it's called a ghost ship, and it's really neat. They shoot this mist up into the water, from the water up into the air, and then they shine these lights, and they have like skeleton like pirates on it, like walking around, and it's like, it's a hologram, but it's right on the water, and I could not believe how many people were there just to see that. So, obviously, we're not going to get that together for this Halloween, but I'm thinking, you know, just those kinds of little things that, I don't know the expense involved, but I feel like if we kind of study what some people do that are not that expensive, I would imagine it's not a tremendous cost, those kind of things we can still utilize with the waterfront there, and I thought that was really neat, was the ghost ship. And then the last thing that I would like to say is, and this kind of bounces off what President De Giuseppe was saying about bringing a lot of different people to the table and a lot of different ideas, and not missing out on opportunities either. I think we, there's a lot of us with a lot of creative ideas and a lot of creativity, but we might not be, you know, the numbers guys that understand, like hedge fund managers and what they do and those kinds of things. And it was brought to my attention by a few people about this idea of what's called, about this program with the opportunity zones that was put out by the current administration, where the states and I believe the counties can designate certain opportunity zones. These are not the same thing as like the Keystone Opportunity Zones that we've seen, or the Enterprise Zones that we've seen. These are zones where people, usually with big bucks frankly, take their money and they invest into a fund, and that fund then is used to redevelop places that are opportunity zones. Bristol Borough, Mill Street is one of those opportunity zones, and what it allows people with the money to put into those funds to do is to be protected from capital gains for the next 10 years or so. So, I, you know, I went to college with some really smart guys, and I called a few of them just asking about this, and every guy that I called that is in the financial world said, we're already invested in one of those, and people with money are crazy not to. And my point is, I don't know enough about it to explain it to everyone here, but these are the kinds of things I would hope that we would also explore at these kinds of meetings, where we bring in people that, you know, instead of just us saying, this is a great idea, and this is a great idea, they can talk numbers, sense, who you reach out to to build these kind of funds. And I think what we found over the last couple of years, it's been very successful for this town, is a merger, and, I shouldn't say a merger, a blending of ideas with private and public, and how we can all kind of come together for a common good. And it just seems like we, Bristol Borough, are absolutely primed to take advantage of these opportunity zones. And, you know, the investors expect a return on their investment, but at the same time, they benefit from taxes and, or tax sheltered gains, and at the same time, we benefit as a community from seeing certain redevelopment projects occur in different areas of the borough. So, again, I don't know enough about it to tell you that I could start a fund tomorrow and understand it, but I do know that some people that do understand it think it is an absolutely fantastic opportunity for the borough. So, I would just like to see us, you know, with these kind of meetings Ralph, that we're talking about, bring in some people that might be able to explain those in greater detail. I know we did have a meeting about it once with raising the bar, and I'm not sure that we all quite understood it even after that. So, it does have many layers, but the simplest thing I know is, really smart people have told me very expressly that the borough would be crazy not to try to reach out to some of these fund managers and say the borough is a prime op place for...
So, this Joe Di Felice is the regional director.
Right.
And we expect the county, the opportunity zone, to, for the next 45 days, to come into the borough and talk to us, and so it is like you're saying, it's a great opportunity. And this guy was really impressed with Bristol. I mean, they walked Mill Street, they went down to the boats, but, you know, he really, when he seen Chestnut and Elm Street, he said, this is what we're talking about, redeveloping areas like this.
Right.
So, that Mill Street's included, and...
Yeah, and I'm not, again, I'm not talking about just Mill Street. You're right, like places like Chestnut and Elm.
Like I said, the county's supposed to come in in the next 45 days, but that's what I'm saying, there's so many things we're hitting on all cylinders, and I think that, you know, we need to now take it to a new level.
And that's one, I think, that it's complicated, so for a lot of people, it's just like, I don't quite understand this, so...
But developers do.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. I think we just really need to not miss out on those kinds of opportunities.
Tony?
Yeah. First thing I would like to do is, I want to thank and congratulate Chris Chapman and all the volunteers for implementing and running a youth football program. And they've been able to do it, you know, from the bootstraps, you know, developing and bringing kids in and raising money, all kinds of fundraisers and different ways of getting money. It's just nice to have a, you know, a youth football program in the borough to go watch a couple games, and, you know, seeing the kids have something to do. And in the future, whether, you know, it's this year or the beginning of next year, I'd like to see the council be able to do something, maybe with some funding or, you know, something for that program. The second thing, I'd like to thank Mr. Dillon and Mr. John Miller for taking care of a couple of issues in the ward with, you know, some lights and tree action and some other stuff. Appreciate that. Mr. Dillon, are we planning on, have we heard anything from Amtrak or Gordon Street?
No, nothing new, but on, as Mr. De Giuseppe stated, on Thursday at nine o'clock, the congressman will be here with the regional director of HUD, and that'll be one of the things on our agenda, or my agenda, to speak with him.
All right, now, just talking, I guess, out of boxes, that if we're able to cut different parts, which is Amtrak's properties that are on the parking lot side, what would be the problem with us cutting Gordon Street? Just, what's the worst that would happen to us if we cut Gordon Street with our workers? What's the downside of it?
I'd like to wait till I speak to the congressman, one, on Thursday, two, we have limited staff, so, and it is, it is private property, so...
No, I understand it is, but we're cutting parts of other people's private property because we want to. I would like to see the residents of Gordon Street being able to get that, you know, at least cleaned up. I don't think that would take much manpower just to cut that front part that's growing out of control. But I guess I'll wait until after you talk to, you know, Thursday. The other question is, were you able to grab those bank statements for me for 2018?
Yes. Here they are.
All right, thanks, sir. And then, let's see, the last thing is, I don't know why Mr. Quatroche would be so skeptical of the things that I've brought up, that it would be a difficult time to understand that vaping or smoking, anything that you stick in your lungs that contains smoke or nicotine or any other chemical, and you blow out into the air, would be something to be skeptical about. So, I mean, I, just to hear that word, that he's skeptical of things that are brought up, I brought up things like having the most qualified people apply for jobs. I had, I brought up the, having the most qualified people apply for boards and commissions, people who are in an industry. I brought up to have a, with our boards and commissions, to have people and the borough be represented by the number of people who are either Hispanic, African-American, or whatever, be represented in those boards. I brought up, a simple one was to protect our kids at the baseball field, to put a net up there because of the playground that was placed there, just, and we got a problem with that. And then the last one, and the other one that I brought up that I thought was a good idea, was, you know, we talked about having term limits, which, again, to me, these are all good ideas. I don't know why Mr. Quatroche or anybody else would be skeptical of these types of requests and things that are brought up, but I'm a team player as much as anybody in here thinks that I'm not, and I'm negative, I'm not. I have no problem supporting Mr. Quatroche. If you have a good idea, I have no problem supporting it. If you want to bring it up, and it goes better with somebody that's in the majority that brings it up about the vaping, I got no problem seconding or just voting on it. If you guys feel more comfortable about that, I have no problem with that. And then, the last thing I want to say is that I appreciate Ralph taking responsibility for the situation with Mr. Bixler. You know, it means a lot when your leaders, you know, they show that they are accountable. Everybody makes mistakes, everybody says things, you know, in the heat of the moment that they may not even realize they're saying. But just the idea of saying it, it goes a long way. So, that's all I have for today.
Okay, so we know what we're voting on?
I have two things that I'm adding. I wrote them both down.
All right, go ahead, whoever wants to start.
You want to start? With that, if you want me to... All right, go ahead. Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council minutes, meeting minutes from September 9th, 2019, to accept the treasurer's report, August 2019, to accept police and DJ report from September 2019, to accept the fire chief's report from September 2019, to accept the inspection department report for September 2019, to accept public works department report for September 2019, and to accept the Harv report and decisions for 9/30/19.
Motion seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All opposed? Before we make another motion, I just want to, I forgot the fall leaf pickup program. Leaves and yard waste will be picked up townwide in brown paper biodegradable bags on or open top containers every Thursday for six weeks, beginning November 7th and ending December 12th. November 28th is a holiday, so pickup will be on that Saturday, November 30th. No plastic bag will be accepted. So, this leaf pickup thing will be posted on the website and on the borough channel for everybody that wants to put leaves out. Okay, Eddie?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance establishing a stop intersection at Landris Road and Bridge Lane.
All right, a second. Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? Mr. Gerard.
I'm not too familiar with that area, although I do right there, and I don't, don't know where Ash Avenue is, but this is reversible if Mr. Ruzen proves to be correct?
Is it reversible?
Yeah, we can get that stop shot out of there.
You always take a stop sign out.
Yeah, move it.
I think the chief, did Peter look at this?
Yeah, we looked at, there was no accident history there, so it went through the engineering traffic study for that and the residents request.
I wasn't like they just put it up.
I understand.
This is not a green lane. This is...
It's back.
It's back.
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with Ash Avenue, that John was calling about.
This is not Ash.
So, it can be removed at some point if council elects to.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend appointment of borough resident Donald McCluskey, McCluskey, I'm sorry, to the Delaware Canal State Park Advisory Committee.
Second by Mr. Quatroche. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All opposed? Any other thing?
I'd like to make a motion to amend council's previous approval of the land development approval to now allow a 40 by 60-foot building instead of a 30 by 40-foot building for the school district.
All right, a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments?
I just want to reiterate, I am totally supportive of this project. I don't want to make it seem like I'm not, I just want to make sure that we're getting it right before we put up a building this big.
Kurt's going to meet with Chick and Al again, hopefully this week, so they can get this building...
I would like to be there as well.
All those in favor? All opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a Bristol Borough kickball program sanctioned by...
Sanctioned by the borough.
Sanctioned by Bristol Borough.
All right, a second. Second by Mr. Pezzek. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All opposed? Are we done?
I'd like to make a motion...
By Mr. Quatroche, second by Mr. Pezzek.